...body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, sir.
Second.
The impromptu move is in saying that we go into closed sessions or any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're in closed session.[30.00][30.00](Crosstalk)
Session.
Second.
Been promptly moved and seconded, we go back into open session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, we're back into open session. I will now pull members to certify that to the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and is identified in the motion for which closed meeting was convened were discussed and considered by the Board. If any member believes that the Board varied from the purposes stated for the closed meeting, please state so and the reason prior to casting a vote. Mr. McCotter.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward.
Yes.
All right, we're back into open session. This is the Monday, August 4, 2025 meeting of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to welcome those of you that are in attendance here in the public meeting room, those that are joining us online. We will start the meeting tonight, as we always do, with the invocation by Mr. McCotter tonight, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to join us, please stand.
Let us pray for the wisdom and the need to act and speak wisely as representatives of Louisa County. I humbly ask for your blessing and protection, Lord, over our citizens, especially over our students, our teachers, our administrators, our staff, and our drivers as school begins. Please continue to mercifully reveal yourself to us and sustain us when we stumble. In your son's, Jesus's name, I pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to shuffle a few things around. I'd like to add to the consent agenda a resolution supporting naming of unnamed lake in Louisa County as Glen, Lake Glenhaven. I would like to delete the speed study on Cedar Hill Road from the consent agenda. And I would like to move from the consent agenda the resolution authorizing a supplemental appropriation from the Community Development Department. I'd like to move that to discussion items. Second.
Been promptly moved and seconded that we approve the amended agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Next is the approval of the minutes.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the bills.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we approve the bills. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Next is the approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Been promptly moved and seconded, we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is recognitions. I do know we have some recognitions tonight. Mr. Goodman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, the recognition on the agenda tonight is recognizing Emma Alexander on her selection as President of Virginia FFA. So I would invite Ms. Alexander and maybe her family if they'd like to come down with them.
No, just her.
Ms. Alexander, I'm the President. I will have you stand up front and face the audience, please. Chairman Adams, members of the Board, members of the public, this is a resolution recognizing Emma Alexander for her outstanding achievement as State President of Virginia FFA. Whereas Emma Alexander, daughter of John and Connie Alexander, and a distinguished graduate of the Louisa County High School class of 2025, has demonstrated exceptional leadership, commitment, and passion for agricultural education and service. And whereas Emma has earned the distinguished honor of being selected as the State President for Virginia FFA, a prestigious position that represents thousands of FFA members across the Commonwealth. And whereas this remarkable accomplishment is a testament to Emma's dedication to the principles of agricultural excellence, her ability to inspire others, and her unwavering work ethic. And whereas Emma is a dedicated member of the Louisa FFA chapter, having served as chapter vice president during the 2324 school year and president in 2425, and she's actively participated in numerous career development events, including livestock judging during her freshman and sophomore years. And whereas Emma has demonstrated exceptional skill in agricultural career preparation, earning first place in the Employment Skills Competition in June 2025 and qualifying to compete at the National FFA Convention in October, following a third-place finish in the Big E in 2024. And whereas Emma has also excelled academically and personally, being a member of the National Honor Society and serving as a photography spokesmodel, while also remaining deeply engaged in the agricultural community outside of school by showing beef Angus heifers regionally. And whereas she is an active member of the National Junior Angus Association and the Virginia Junior Angus Association, exemplifying her dedication to leadership and service beyond the classroom. And whereas Emma's selection as State President brings great pride to her family, Louisa County Public Schools, and the entire Louisa community, and her leadership will serve as a guiding force for the future of agricultural education in Virginia. And whereas she will represent Louisa County with integrity, vision, and excellence at both the state and national levels, continuing to uphold the highest standards of achievement. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Louisa County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes and congratulates Emma Alexander for her outstanding achievement in being named State President of the Virginia FFA and extends best wishes for continued success in all of her future endeavors. Chairman Adams, I would ask that you present this resolution.
Well, Emma, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I want to congratulate you on your election as State President. I just did a little math, and I've had this conversation before. Forty-three years ago, I was State President of the FFA in West Virginia. And I can tell you, I started to bring my jacket from forty-three years, which I still have, it's dry cleaned in my closet. But I'll tell you, and I'll tell you folks that are watching, this blue corduroy over forty-three years shrinks because the jacket no longer fits me. And I know it's the jacket, I know it's not me. But what an honor and what a life-changing experience you're going to have, being the State President of the FFA. As you travel around Virginia representing the FFA and representing Louisa County, I've had conversations with the Ag teachers at the school. All the parliamentary procedure that I know, that I use to run these meetings, I learned when I was chapter president and state president of the FFA. So it's a wonderful experience. Your community, your family, this county is very proud of you and will wish you a great deal of luck as you spend this year, because it will bring you lifelong memories and lifelong friendships. So congratulations.
Next one.
I think she should. Can I get one as well? Oh, one more for the camera.
Do I have one more picture?
They didn't break until they...
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank y'all. This means a lot. I have been in Louisa school systems my entire life, and I've grown up with, you know, some of you guys. I've met you guys and I've known you for a long period of time, and I've gotten to know you guys on a more personal level. And I'm grateful for that. I've Savannah, Mr. Goodman's son, she made a huge impact on me, and, I mean, she's not the only one. There's a lot of people in this county, Mr. Bundrick being one of them, that I couldn't have done any of this without them, and I'm extremely grateful. And there is no other county that I would rather be from. So, thank y'all.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, next we'll move to public comment. I do have several cards. We have some things that have been emailed in, some things that have been sent in. When I call your name, if you, you can speak on any item that is not a public hearing tonight. We do have six public hearings. So if you're here for one of those public hearings, wait till then. If not, when I call your name, come to the microphone or the podium. Make sure you use the microphone. State your name and your voting district. You don't have to give your address, just your name and your voting district. You'll have three minutes to speak. I'll give you a 15-second warning. And Mr. Goodman will take that card from you, ma'am. Okay, the first card I have is from Vicki Hart, and this one's Vice Mayor Update.
Following up with the other one? I have two cards in your hand.
I see that.
Okay, Vicki Hart, Town of Louisa. This is my Vice Mayor Update for you. I wanted to let you all know that we have officially appointed Matt Kersey as the interim mayor. And I'm now back to a voting member on the council and the Vice Mayor still, maintaining all financial responsibilities because of the interim nature of this position. Also, I wanted to remind everyone that we have National Night Out this week, and we'd like to invite all of you to attend. It is coming up tomorrow. So we welcome to see you. If you'd like to help set up, be there at 3:30. I'm sure they could use your help. Otherwise, it starts at 5 o'clock. And the last thing I have for you, as you know, I am a very transparent person, so I wanted you to have the heads up that we are going to be researching annexation. We are going to look into the process. And at that point, instead of doing like Gornsville did and announced that we've been doing this for two years and we're just now telling you, we're telling you upfront that we are looking officially, going to be looking into the process because unfortunately we have to expand the tax base in the town. And that is all I have for the town.
Well, I'll just leave you there and restart the time. So you're up again.
Vicki Hart, Town of Louisa, resident. I wanted to thank everyone for the excellent job that was done on the ag fair, and I know you didn't put it on, but the county, you run this county, and it takes all of us to put it together. It was excellent. I had the honor of winning the horse basket auction. I scared my husband because he thought I was now buying a horse for our backyard, a tanyard. But once I figured out that what the little implements of destruction in the basket were, I promptly gave them away to Marcy, who has a bunch of horses and knew what they were called and what could do with them. I did ask if I could use the liniment on them, and she said, yeah, but she didn't recommend it because she preferred it for her horse. Now, data center money. I know there's been talk about all the money coming in on these data centers. What I have not heard is why we cannot use that money to address the destruction to farmland that has occurred to places like Nancy Woolfolks and the other farmers in this county. These properties have been destroyed by stormwater runoff whenever we have fast rains. I fail to see why that is not under consideration with that money. It is development that created the issue for them, and we may as well use development to correct the issue. That's it. Thank you.
Next, Stephen Randolph.
Stephen Randolph, and I live in the Kukui District. It's come to my attention, whether it be true or not, I have a confidential informant that tells me that the Kentucky Springs Road data center has dug two wells. My question is, and maybe Mr. McCotter can follow up because he's my district supervisor, how deep are these wells? And when are they going to become operational? Second issue for me is there's some conflicting type of testimony where people are saying, I cannot vote for this data center, or I'm going to vote for this data center. What I don't understand is why you people cannot vote on this before the election. So that way we know how you vote, and then we can vote accordingly. Like people tell me all the time, elections have consequences, and if you vote for this, you'll pay the consequence when it comes to voting. And if you are neutral on it, well, then it's a good possibility that we can have you recalled if we do an injunction, and we can prove that you people did this for financial gain. Now, I'm not saying anybody on this board is doing it, but I've been a police officer for almost 40 years, and what drives people is motive, and money is motive. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next is, I have been asked to submit to the, into the record a resolution from the Town of Mineral. This resolution was dated July 14th, 2025. Resolution, excuse me, Resolution Mineral Town Council opposing the proposed Amazon Web Services, AWS, data center campus at Fisher Tuning. Since they sent this resolution, that application has been withdrawn, but we will still read this into the record, and it will become part of the record of the meeting. Do we have any more cards?
It's all CUP.
All right, I don't have any more cards. The rest of the cards I have are for one of our six public hearings tonight. Is there anyone that would wish to address the Board on any subject that is not part of the CUP?
Thank you for allowing me to make, have me make public comment. My topic is-
Before you start, just your name and your voting district.
Sure. My name is Bill Walling, and I live in the Mineral District.
Yes, sir.
My topic is about the data centers. As you know, it's a national issue. It's not just a Louisa County issue. And of course, you can get information about that from many places, including the New York Times and the Washington Post. But this evening, I'd like to read a portion of the newsletter from the Piedmont Environmental Council. Just a couple of sentences. "The growth of data centers is threatening our water and electricity supplies, deteriorating our air quality and public health, contributing to climate change, degrading our communities' parks and quality of life, and raising our electric bills." And I would add that I suspect that anyone who wants to sell their home to anyone beside Amazon is probably going to discover that the value of their property is less than it has been. "The role of the Board of Supervisors is to represent the best interests, health and welfare of constituents," as you well know. "The consequences of data centers," which I just read, "fly in the face and contradict the Board's responsibility to its constituents," in my view. "I consider them tragic monstrosities." If you look at Route 33, where the one is beginning to be, one of them is beginning to be constructed, the people surrounding that, both on 33 as well as alongside the data center, every morning will have to face that data center for the rest of the time that they live in their home there. The third data center that has been withdrawn, fortunately, but it's my understanding that that may not be a permanent withdrawal, affected a number of people who, within the last four years, have built new homes-
Fifteen seconds.
-that were under great threat because of the existence of that. I'm glad that they withdrew their proposal, but I worry about the future on that. I've been thinking about these data centers. Words come to mind regarding the infestation in Louisa County.
I'm going to give you about 10 more seconds because your three minutes is up.
Negligent, callous, careless, irresponsible, greedy. These are not development, in my view. The existence of these data centers is rape.
All right, sir.
The rape of Louisa County.
I've given you over your time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Please stop this insanity.
Is there anyone else that would wish to address the Board? I'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to information and discussion items. The first is a presentation, which is VDOT's Quarterly Update, and I see the resident engineer, Mr. Scott Thornton. Mr. Thornton?
VDOT's report is on page 171 of your packet, if you're interested in following along.
Board members, staff, hope everybody's doing all right tonight. So for pretty much all summer since the last time I was in front of you, our maintenance crews have been working on addressing drainage issues, some roadside issues. The crews have been working on primary and secondary mowing most recently, as well as roadside trimming with, you know, particular focus around the schools and daylighting signs and things like that before the kids get back to school later on. Our paving schedule is on time, and we're still set for a November 1st completion. You will see some of our crews performing some spot patching and pipe replacements ahead of the 2026 schedule, so we're running a little bit ahead on that, which is a good thing. For the Route 15 project, the mainline milling has been completed. We're looking at trench widening and end lane patching taking place nightly over the next two weeks. The guardrail replacement will then follow that, and that'll be done, done prior to final paving. We are noticing some areas of settlement around the pipe replacements, and these areas will be milled and repaved. We're going to have sign replacement coming up after that, and then the final paving will start the week of October 1st. So that should wrap up a large portion of that project. The Route 714 Bridge Project has experienced a few delays due to weather. Our crews are still working on that, but I was notified this morning that the project may not finish until after the Labor Day holiday. If you recall, it was originally slated in, right at the end of August, so they're pushing about a week behind schedule. 714, the one down here, I can't remember, New Hope Church, maybe? Right here? Just right down the road. The Bellmead Bridge, we had a fixed completion date of April 3rd, 2026. Right now, that project is running ahead of schedule by a couple of months, and weather notwithstanding, they expect to be done not short, not shortly after the first part of the year. So that should be done fairly quickly.
Can you have it open back up and see you're ready to go?
Again, it's where they're projecting to finish is kind of right in that sweet spot of the wintertime, so it just depends on what we look like towards the holiday there. Hamilton Road Bridge Stakeholder Meeting is scheduled towards the end of the month. That is still on schedule for a planned start in October. And then last thing I have is, in a few weeks, our district planning folks will be reaching out to county staff for meeting invites for advance of the smart scale. So we'll be starting planning for the next round of smart scale coming up. That concludes my report. Questions?
Any questions? Mr. Woodward?
You can go first, then.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Thornton, when you were here in the spring, you brought us up to date on Oakland Road speed study. And as I recall, the study didn't indicate any need in changing of the speed, but it showed that it needed signage and, I think, lines on the side of the road. Any idea of when that may happen?
So the restriping follows the, restriping and signage will follow when the paving schedule is done, or if they're getting close to it. So I would look towards the end of October-
Okay.
-when they go do the restriping.
Great. Thank you.
And then while I have you, so you did ask about the intersection up here at Oakland at the railroad crossing, so they are still looking into that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mrs. Jones?
The Spring Creek, going into Spring Creek, there's a significant bump that goes in. Many residents have had a lot of concerns. Will that be fixed when they do the final paving there by October 1st, do you think?
So they're going to start the final paving on, around October 1st?
Okay.
But yes, ma'am, that will be fixed as part of that.
That's just what I noticed.
It has to be milled down and repaired. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a comment. The entrance to the new Little League Diamond at Kukui, I've seen it several times now where people take the turn lane into that.
Two.
And tonight, a guy was in front of me, takes the turn lane thinking he's going to Mineral. But when he got to those barrels that are up there, he just whipped that thing to the left to try and dodge those barrels, and if I had to slow down, he'd have been right into me. So I would ask that y'all take a look at that, and something needs to be done.
Move the barrels, do something.
Move the barrels further into the entrance or something so that they don't try to jut around them and end up hitting somebody.
Okay. We'll take a look at it.
Mr. Goodman?
Mr. Barlow, Scott brought up some good points about speed studies in general after a recent discussion, and I just wondered if we might talk briefly about the process for asking for future speed studies. I guess if, if we've done a speed study on a road in the past either four or five years, and another one needs to be done within that period, then it would need to come out of our six-year plan funding.
Yes, sir.
And so what you had suggested was maybe kind of an informal consultation when a speed study request does come in. And I just wanted to review that with the Board. So if you do want a speed study done on a specific road, let me know, and I can reach out to Scott. We can get a back and forth going just to evaluate where that is on, from a timeline standpoint. And if you all do want to do it, then you can evaluate taking that, that funding out of the six-year plan funds, if you want. Did I say that right, Scott?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman? I have maybe three questions. How has Kentucky Springs Road fared over the past nine months of AWS construction at the Lake and Technology Campus? Is there, are you all monitoring that, measuring that? Are there benchmarks that you, that you look at, or is it just when it's, when it's done or when we receive a complaint?
So we, we look at it as complaints come in. It's evaluated pretty much weekly by our area headquarters. And then, of course, as, as we have folks come in, we have a lot of our folks that work at Kukui Area Headquarters live out that way, so they are very cognizant of what goes on out that, out that way. As far as condition, we did see when they brought in some larger loads, some of the shoulder deterioration start to happen, things like that. And then we had some areas out by 208 with the turn lane where we had some of their trucks that didn't use the load axles properly that caused some pushing and things. But we've been working with the contractor out there, and they were quickly on it to work with us to correct those issues and to-
It's good news.
For all, for all purposes, it's going well.
All right, good. I noticed on your, your plans in review, Lake and a Town Center. Where exactly is that? I have an idea where that is, but I'm not 100% sure.
I have to go back and look, so.
Okay, all right. Lastly, years ago, there was plans to improve Route 208 from Dickerson's to the bridge. Do we have any, has there been any further study on that, or that, that old plan still hold true, or there's just nothing been done since then? just nothing been done since then?
The last time I looked at that study's probably been maybe two years ago. I know my predecessor had worked on that with the county, but I don't know where it stood funding-wise. I believe it may have been put forward as a smart scale application, but it didn't go anywhere that I can recall.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Thornton?
I have one question and comment. That route was put in for smart scale. It didn't go anywhere. Then there were sections that were put in on smart scale. That didn't go anywhere either, so to your point. We had talked, maybe time before last that you were here, about on Route 29 at the Route 3 exit in Culpeper, which is Route 3 for a short while, then 522 to the lake. That's probably the only major access point to the lake that doesn't have a sign that says Lake Anna, this exit or Lake Anna this way. And you were going to look into that. Do you have an update on that?
So that actually comes through our Virginia Logos program. So I believe I still need to have staff send the link over to that, but it's not actually a sign that VDOT puts up.
Okay.
All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is a discussion on the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Smart Scale Area Type Change. Mr. Goodwin?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this information is included in your board packet on page 84. As the memo relays, the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission, representatives of which are here tonight, in case you have detailed questions, is considering a change in the smart scale ratings in their areas that are non-MPO areas. So that would be essentially the areas outside of Charlottesville and Albemarle from type C to type D. We are the only rural planning district area that currently is not type D in the state, if I'm to understand the memo correctly. And what they did in this memo where they recommend the change to type D is they evaluated our past smart scale applications, a couple of which you all have been discussing tonight, to see whether or not they would have scored higher if they had been categorized as type D in prior smart scale processes. And they would have, with a couple of exceptions. So this doesn't require a vote from this body this evening. This would be a vote by the PDC Board itself, and their vote is binding on all the localities in the PDC, and they would probably take that vote in September. So again, no formal resolution is needed by you all tonight. I would encourage you to review that information, provide any feedback that you have, ask any questions that you may have, either here or to the PDC directly. And again, Ms. Jacobs and her representatives are here this evening. And did I say anything wrong in all that information? Okay. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and so are they.
Anybody have any follow-up questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Woodward?
I just have a comment. Mr. Barlow and myself are the two supervisor representatives from Louisa County on the Thomas Jefferson Planning District. So if any of our fellow supervisors or anybody else has anything that they would like for us to take forward to the meeting, please let us know.
Anything else? All right. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Next is a discussion on proposed amendments to Louisa County Code 14-21 and 14-24, which is our dog tags. And I know the treasurer is here. Mr. Walsh.
I hate dog tags.
Good evening, Chairman and the board members. What the treasurer's office in association of the Treasurers of Virginia is proposing is that we amend as section 1421 for a dog license requirement for lifetime dog issues. Currently, what we have is, in our ordinance, is $10 for the male and female and $4 for spayed and neutered dogs. The kennels is 20 dogs for 45 and 50 dogs for 50, which means that someone have up to 20 dogs, they can pay a fee of $45. If they have anything from $20 above up to 50 dogs, they pay 50. That won't change according to the code. We can't do anything with kennel license, but in 2017, the General Assembly put in... let's see what the amendment, House Bill 1470, which authorized locale to allow for lifetime dog license. What we recommend is have a 10-year license fee for all dogs, spayed, neutered, and no refunds be issued. The lifetime dog tag's going to sell January 26th. That gives us time to order them. It'd be in line with Gushland, Orange, Hanover's $10 for their lifetimes. New Kennels 15. We feel like that it'd be less burden for the citizens. They can pay one-time fee, and then they don't have to renew it every year. There'd be upbeat of the revenue initially for the first two years, because some of the ones who are paying $4 will be paying 10. But it's like two years after that, it won't cost them anything, because that $10 covers a lifetime, as long as the dog's within Louisa County. If the rabies certificate expires, then the dog tag expires within 30 days. The way we would know that is that when they take the animal back to the veterinarian, then they send us the license fee like they do now. We update in our system, and we put the veterinarian's license there. If for some reason they don't do that, some people don't want to be compliant with some of these laws and ordinances that we have, then if the animal control comes in and say, "Okay, where's your dog tag?", and they didn't do it because of the... they didn't go back to the vet, then the animal control can enforce that of being enunciated with the state of Virginia with license for vaccination as well as Air County. So what we're proposing is very simple, is to have a lifetime of $10 for all of the individual dog tags, doesn't affect the kennel tags at all, and then go and sell from January 1st, no, 26th.
Mr. Williams? Thank you, Mr. Walsh. I appreciate your comments. I have a couple of questions, and I'm not sure I really know the answers. A lot of times I like to ask questions I know the answers to.
Okay.
Why do we have dog tags? Let's start with that question.
The state of Virginia legislative has never changed the law that requires us to sell dog tags at the locality.
So the Commonwealth requires us to sell dog tags?
Correct. Yes, sir.
It's not like you can sell dog tags if you want to. You must sell dog tags.
It's not a treasurer's office, state of Virginia likes to sell dog tags.
It's not like Dillon Rule, where you can do it if they let you do it. They're dictating us to do this.
Yes, sir. They're dictating us to...
Then that gets to my second answer. So it's not about rabies, confirming rabies vaccinations, then it's about selling dog tags.
Exactly.
Is that right? Okay.
That's true.
Let me answer for you.
That's true.
And, Mr. Walsh, I realize you're the treasurer, and you do a wonderful job, and we love you and everything, but this just, in today's age, is almost ridiculous in my mind. But I'm just saying.
Well, I would love to y'all go there to our representative and get that change. We would love that.
Let me see if I'm right about this.
Maybe we could put on our little legislative...
See if I'm right about this.
That could be on our legislative agenda.
Yeah.
Because two years ago, I talked to the then-county attorney and talked to you and talked to the commissioner about eliminating the dog tax in Louisa County and found out that that is not an option for the county, because the Commonwealth requires a dog tax.
Correct. Yes, sir.
But what I also found out, that what triggers the treasurer's office to send out a notice for the dog tax is that you go get your rabies vaccine and a vet then sends you the information. So the questions I had at the time, number one, if I go to... I was talking to a friend of mine about this just not too long ago. If you go to an out-of-county vet, there's a good chance that they don't tell the county that the dog...
By state of Virginia law, that office is required to notify the locality of where that resident lives.
They're required, but I actually did a little research and found some that don't. And then, secondly, if you don't take your dog to get a rabies shot, county doesn't even know the dog exists, so you don't get a tax. I mean, I just want to point that out.
That's correct.
How ridiculous it is, but it is required by state law.
It's all up being a good citizen to withhold the law when it can.
Good citizen.
Okay. So that's basically what it is.
Yeah. Well, I just want to...
When they go to the vet, the vet tells them that your rabies certificate will be sent to the locality required to buy dog tag. Yeah, they won't go to the car and smile, just like we're smiling tonight, and say, "Okay, that's great."
Yeah. Well, I will have to say, the four dogs that I own, I'm not going to say who my vet is, but they're very thorough in making sure that you know that we have four dogs, because we get it.
I enjoyed getting my four vaccinated for five of my Chihuahuas.
Yeah. I've seen pictures of them, yeah.
Okay.
Is there any other questions? Yes, sir.
Chairman, regardless of how we feel about it, whether it's right or not, the state to dictate to us. But my question is, smart use of the funds. Where are those funds allocated to once we do collect them?
It goes just into general fund with that revenue. It generates about $8,000 a year. It's not a lot of money. By the time you do administrative costs and everything, every treasurer will tell you, it's not worth doing it.
But... Yeah.
By law, we have to do it. But it's about $8,000 goes in the general fund.
And did you know how much this could actually save you for mailing and staff costs to do this lifetime?
I think they say... Well, with the offset of those... the yearly dog tags running out, it's going to be offset about even. So it's going to save us. It's going to save us initially with all the mailing and everything of the yearly dog tags, but then, when that three-year period comes and everybody's kind of up to date with those lifetimes, then we're going to probably break even, because not going to do the administrative cost to mail out all the certificates. Once we get the rabies certificate from the vet, we have to send that with the bill for your dog tag to the citizens. All that mailing cost a lot.
Mr. Williams?
They're supposed to mail us within a month, but a lot of times, you may get three months at a time from the veterinarian's office. They don't send it according to code, and we have to call the vet and say, "Well, look, you're supposed to be sending us this monthly, but you haven't done it." We mail them the code, and then they get on track for about a month, and all of a sudden, they drop off. We get three months at one time, and we mail in the 50 bills.
What's the penalty if we stopped issuing dog tags?
Big part?
What's the penalty if we stopped issuing dog tags? What would the state do to us?
We've got a good attorney here. I'm sure she can find out that for us.
Nice pivot.
I'm not sure, but I...
I'd be curious to know. What's the penalty? What are they going to do?
I'm not sure. But by me taking the oath as code as treasurer, then I'm going to bill for dog tax, because that's one of the statutes I take the oath to.
Just out of curiosity, is there the same tax on cats?
Well, if y'all have an ordinance that includes cats, you have to co-provision.
There's a state that has a provision to do that.
Yeah, but does the state require the same on cats?
No.
Just dogs?
They don't require just dogs.
Just dogs. I think that might be part of our legislative agenda, to ask our legislators to get rid of that. I think that's ridiculous.
Save some money. Either hand the cats or get rid of the dogs.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. And thank you. Thank you. I will echo what Mr. Williams said. You do an outstanding job as treasurer. You really, really do.
We appreciate that. I've got one more issue. Okay? Well, I have y'all.
Oh, no, 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 no.
It's in your package.
Okay.
That was the ordinance of 14-21. When I looked at it, I saw 14-24, which our ordinance requires us to put the sex of the dog on air metal tag. If that's the case, we would have to have female and male metal tags. But the state done requires to have the sex of the animal on the tag. We've never done that, but it is within our ordinance, or I'd like for that wording being taken out of our ordinance to 14-24.
Do we know? We get it on a light public hearing night.
So does this have to go to the Planning Commission, because it's not changed, or just here?
No, sir. It's not an 86, so you're good.
Thank you for being proactive. That's what I was going to say. Appreciate you being proactive and trying to help the citizens, and we'll...
Well, I think the citizens are going to be really happy. We get that question all the time. Why we have to buy them, but why can't you just do a lifetime? So we appreciate y'all listening and taking that consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I was serious about that being part of our legislative package.
Yeah, I was, too.
I'm adding it to my notes right now, sir.
Yeah.
Next is a resolution authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the Community Development Department, which was...
I know.
Yes, it is.
Did we add something to the discussion?
That's what it is. That's what we have.
Oh, yeah.
Community Development. Mr. Woodward, I think you had some questions you requested to talk about.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is only a resolution authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the Community Development Department to hire an Ag and Forestry and Rural Conservation person for the Community Development Office. I just felt like, after I read through this, that we just needed to discuss this a little further. I don't think that it's necessarily a bad idea. I think we do need to hire somebody for that. I'm not sure whether we're really to the point of needing that person now. Maybe we needed them a month ago, two months ago, maybe. I just think that we need to have a little bit of further discussion on the issue. And, you know, I saw, I was certainly appreciative that the information was provided that it shows the salary plus the benefits plus the taxes. It gave us a full rundown on exactly what the cost would be. Probably should thank Ms. Colvin for that, and also that that person would need a vehicle. And we were putting an estimated $50,000 in there for professional services that could potentially be needed in that person's role with the Community Development Department. So I don't know if Mr. Kuhn, I'm not sure who, could possibly, maybe just between ourselves, but, you know, I'd just like to know. My understanding has been that this person's role is mainly to help keep Louisa County rule, and I understand that. But in our revenue, additional revenue committee meetings, I got the feeling that we... I don't really know how to phrase this, but in our attempt to keep the county rule, one of the key ways to do that, and we've learned this through counties like Falk Year, who have been pretty successful in doing this, that buying up property division rights is a way to do this. And I think we understand that if we decide to go down that road, it's going to be tens of millions of dollars that that's going to cost to do it effectively. I don't know that we're going to generate with what's approved now, we're going to generate enough revenue to be able to accomplish that. So that gets back to the thing of, do we need this position now? Do we need to potentially slow that down? I don't know the answer to that. I don't, as I said earlier, I don't have a problem with the position, but I don't know exactly when we need to do this. This is telling me we need it now. If that's what I hear back, then I'd say that's what we need to do.
Mr. Chairman?
Let me address part of it, then. So I pulled up, this position is part of the recommendations from the Ag and Forestry District on ways that Louisa County can explore and take initiatives to protect working farms and forest lands and open lands. And there were a couple of key points here. One was dedicated staff, adding a full-time position within the Community Development Department. And this is part of the job description, to administer crucial protection programs like Ag and Forestry District's zoning initiatives, voluntary easement, and conditional use permits. Two was conservation easements, utilizing the Ag and Forestry and Rural Preservation Committee to expand conservation and easement programs, which does not require funding, including easement donations, transfer of developmental rights, which doesn't require funding. What does, was what you just mentioned, purchase of developmental rights, PDRs. These programs can induce some secure matching from state, federal, non-government sources. Tax relief for farmers, providing potential rebates from personal property taxes for non-registered farm use vehicles, and real estate property taxes for agricultural buildings that meet conservation standards. Strengthening the use value of land use taxation for working farms and forests, including additional 25% tax rebate. That would be a board decision. So that would be a board decision. Working with Ag and Forestry Committee for grants, to offer limited grants to $15,000 to family for conservation easements, and $10,000 for completing transfer of registered vehicles. transfer of registered farms and forestal transition plans, incentivizing investment, matching funds from, matching farmers and forest owners with funds from the state agriculture, forestry, industry development funds, AFID funds to encourage new investments in agriculture, education and economic development. It talks about working with the cooperative extension and that sort of thing. So I think this position is designed to help oversee, I look at this position sort of, we have an economic development director who focuses on economic development. This is a ag conservation manager that would focus on, and that would be their sole focus, on programs and initiatives that would bring funding, whether it's state, federal, anything local would come through this board, but also help people land in conservation easements, go through that process, implement programs that the Ag and Forestry District comes up with. So while PDRs, purchasing developmental rights may be part of it, we all still have to figure that out, may be part of it, that's just a small part, I think, of what this position would do. So anyway, that was my two cents. Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanted to say, I think initially it would be a small part. I think it would turn into being a very large part of it if it works the way that we envision it to work.
Well, I hope it does.
Yes.
Yeah, I hope it does. Yes, sir.
I serve on the Ag and Forestry Committee and what we don't have is somebody that's employed in the county full-time to advocate for these things. We have staff that will certainly advocate for anything we ask them to, but it's not their central focus. So the committee thought it would be good to, because we're getting such a pushback and a cry from the public about, and the farmers, that, hey, there's, it's not AWS data centers or compressor station, it's houses, it's everything. It's school attendance going up this year at a rate that is, we haven't seen in a while. I mean, and it's trying to put a curb and a cap on some of that and trying to protect what we have if people want to protect it. We've been very clear about that, the AFD. You know, if I'm a landowner and I don't want to protect it and I don't want to do that and I want to sell to development, then I can do that. But that's, but it's to help the people who want to keep it rural and to give them an avenue for someone to advocate for them, that is a paid staff position. And the good news is because of the AWS, because of the building permits that they've been funding for that, that can only be spent in the community development department, we have monies available to fund a position like this that would, that would work to keep some of that at bay potentially. And so I don't think it's too early to hire it, is my personal opinion. I think we're probably late hiring it. I wish we would have had money to do this 10 years ago. We didn't. We have some funding now that we can pull for this and I would, I would move that we approve this resolution and I'll put that motion out there.
I want to speak to you.
And then we can continue discussion.
Is there a second?
Well, I have the discussion.
I'll second it, but I would like to talk.
Go ahead.
I absolutely agree with the both of you. I sat on the revenue committee with you. We looked at the numbers. We looked at the numbers based on the first two data center, Amazon data centers. We looked at the numbers conservatively. The money was there, so I'm not quite sure where and why you think the money isn't there now. We specifically put money aside in our projections for this position. It is well, we are well past time due that we need to have somebody advocating for our farms and for the way of life that our citizens want us to have. I think this position needs to be funded and I think we need to move forward. We've already advertised for this position. We've already received many, many applicants. We've already started reviewing those applications. I think we've already opened the barn gate on this and we're out the door and I absolutely support this position 100%.
It's my understanding this position right now is to bring ideas forward to the board and the Ag and Forestry Committee, somebody that's sole function is to concentrate on coming up with ways to try and keep the county rural. So as I see it, this position is not going to be a decision-making person or at all. They're going to bring us ideas as to how best we can try to keep the county rural. Anything, right now, we don't have any guidelines set up other than as on an ordinances, but we're talking about changing some of those to try and keep things more rural. But the function of this person, as I see it, is to come up with ideas and means that they think will accommodate the Ag and Forestry Districts and what have you. And it's not a, not a position that is going to say, you got to do this, you got to do that. It's going to be back and forth. My only concern with this, and I think y'all have alleviated that, is I want this person to be solely focused on this and not just put in community development to do anything else. This, we're hiring a position to solely bring ideas back to this board as to how we can change things to maybe keep the county rural as much as we can. So I don't, I see this as a position that is to provide information to us and also not somebody that's going to be dragged off into other areas of the department, working on other things.
I think I would add one caveat, if, from my understanding, is that position is really twofold. One, to bring ideas back to the board. The second is to implement the policies that the board adopts.
It will be, once we've adopted them.
Yes, yes. Once we've adopted them, yes. Mr. Barnes?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to beat this up. I support the position and I think the board as a whole supports the position. But I think the one thing that Mr. Woodward brought up that we've really got to look at is that once we get into purchasing development rights, we're going to have to have a funding stream to buy those rights. And so that should be a part, it don't have to be a part right now, but that's a question and we got the answer going forward. So, but like I said, I support this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. McCollum?
I'd like to thank Supervisor Woodward to bring this out of the consent agenda and to discussion. I think this is where we are at our best as a board, discussing these things at a meeting so that we understand everybody's position. I have received information this evening that has crystallized my opinion on it. And if you look around Louisa County and see areas like Lake Anna or Zion's Crossroads or many of the other areas that are developing into something other than rural, if we are serious about implementing our county comprehensive plan as well as what Supervisor Jones said, that's why people are here. They don't come here because it's a concrete jungle. They come here because it is rural for the most part, then we do need to consider this position as well as understand its limitations and perhaps a year from now, reevaluate and see if it's serving us the way we want it to be serving Louisa County. And I thank Supervisor Barlow for also making sure that that position, while enlarging its government, is going to maintain, is going to have a function on a certain purpose, not just rolled into community involvement. I will be supportive.
Any other discussion, Mr. Woodward?
I would like to finish up my comments, Mr. Chairman, by thanking everybody up here. I agree with Mr. McCollum that we need to have these discussions. I really have no clue coming in tonight. That's why I asked to do that and y'all have certainly helped me make my decision and I thank you for that.
Sure. And again, I applaud you for bringing it up and I applaud the board for the discussion. All right, we have a motion on the floor for approval in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is on to new business items. First is a resolution authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the Children's Services Act funding.
Okay. And we have one before that to the Water Authority. Want me to start with the Water Authority one or the CSA one?
He's got a different number, hold on. This is a different, you have, how many do you have?
What I have on my-
Hold on. He has four, not six. Let him get the correct agenda.
Oh, sorry.
No, he's not going.
Yeah.
Work off of that one.
Yeah, I'll work off of this one that has six instead of four. I wonder what else we missed. Resolution to proceed with the Louisa County Water Authority capital projects. Go ahead.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. This is a request to proceed with the three water, Louisa County Water Authority capital projects were part of our 26 budget. The funding has already been appropriated. This is just a matter of letting them go ahead and proceed with the projects. It's for the Newbridge wastewater treatment repair capital project, the Northeast Creek treatment plant sludge back and, there's three here, sorry.
Skater.
And Zion's Crossroads wastewater treatment plant, skater system.
I move to approve it.
Second. Been properly moved and seconded that we approve this capital projects for the Water Authority. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Now, according to my agenda, we'll see, is a resolution authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the Children's Services Act funding?
Yes, this is a resolution requesting an appropriation of an additional, it's a hundred ninety thousand dollar appropriation, but the local portion is eighty-three thousand six hundred. Our cases have been more in 25 and these are the additional expenses that we anticipate for the end of the year.
Well, I don't want to put you on the spot. I think you probably got the number at least close in your head. What's the total we've spent on Child Services Act here in the county this year? Four point three million, does that sound about right?
I wanted to say four point four, but-
Okay, four point four with a ninety-some added?
With this added.
Yeah, okay.
I want to say it's four point two plus this.
I just want citizens to hear between foster care and special ed and all this stuff that we've spent in the county. I sit on this board, I've sat on it for a long number of years. We have spent four point four million dollars taking care of children at risk and at need in this community. I just, I just want to make sure that resonates with people, four point four million. Thank you. I move to approve it.
Second. Been properly moved and seconded that we approve this supplemental appropriation. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next is a resolution authorizing a pass-through appropriation for firing MS from the Foundation for Lake Anna Emergency Services.
How about number three?
That's fine. Let Wanda do it while she's up there. You can come back to number three.
That's okay. Okay. So the next resolution is a pass-through appropriation for donation from the Lake Anna Foundation for Emergency Services. The Gallaghers are here with me.
Those are our favorite two fundraisers.
Yes, they've done a wonderful job. They have donated through this group seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars for, to purchase an autopilot system for the new boat that's being purchased, as well as a new replacement motor for our current rescue boat. So this is to appropriate those funds is what this request is for and I'm going to let them speak.
Yeah. Mr. Gallagher?
Hi, we're Pat and Jane Gallagher and in the interest of time, we left our big check back at our seats. We'll do a photo op another time, but we hope to be back up here again soon. We're just happy to support our first responders because we so appreciate it.
We can take, let's do a photo up.
Bring the check, bring the check.
This is big. You spend a lot of time. We can take some time. Get the check.
While he's bringing up the check, I wanted to-
Mr. Looney's reaching in his pocket to get a check right now, so.
Amazing.
While he's bringing up the check, I wanted to let you know that we'll finish out the year with three fundraisers. One will be a luau at Caliopis as they celebrate their eighth anniversary. That will be in September. October, there will be a wine and brew fest held at the Tap House in the area adjacent to the Tap House. And then we'll finish out the year with a end-of-year fundraising letter.
Is the chief still here? Yeah, have her come on.
Hey, thank you for what you do.
Yeah, yeah.
Come in, too. Let's get a picture.
That's so big, I don't know if I can get it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just so you all see this, this represents, I think, over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the foundation-
You might be conservative.
-for our community and for emergency services at Lake Anna. The only issue we have with this is when the treasurer does go to deposit it, they can't go through the drive-through network. Mr. Walsh finds a way to, he finds a way to-
And also to note that it's given by the Lake Anna community.
Thank you all very much.
Thank y'all. Action I need is for y'all to appropriate those funds.
So moved. Motion on the floor, sir. Motion on the floor. Motion to approve.
Yeah, do we have a motion for approval?
We did.
We did in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is a letter of support for the unincorporated community sign for Waltrip Road.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The information supporting this action starts on page 107 of your board packet. You've had a request from a citizen in that area to place a sign in what is now the unincorporated area of Waltrip, which is west of Route 15 on 22, so very close to the old Green Springs Elementary School, if you're familiar with that area. According to the citizen, I haven't verified this, but I have no reason to believe it's not true, there was a post office in that area from 1888 to 1956 and there was a sign well into the 60s, possibly into the 70s, that was in that area, just, as I understand it, maybe one of the small green signs that denotes an unincorporated area and I'm seeing some heads not around the room, so maybe you've heard folks talk about it. VDOT said that in order for them to proceed with that, they would need a draft or a letter of support from the county and there is a draft letter in your packet on page 109. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have or we'll sign the letter if you approve.
It's my district and the citizen also told me that at the historic museum that there are letters on file with the postmark stamp from Waltrip that they have turned over her-
Great.
-great-grandfather was the original postmaster.
Wow, very cool.
Yeah, so.
Motion.
Motion to approve?
Say. Been properly moved and seconded that we approve this letter of support. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution authorizing a pass-through appropriation to the Louisa County Sheriff's Department for AED units. Ms. Coven.
Yes, Chairman, members of the board. This is a resolution. We received funding from Lake Anna Resort LLC for a proffer in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for AED units for the sheriff's department cars. They also made a donation of a thousand dollars, so we have a total of twenty-one thousand dollars that we're requesting that we appropriate so that the sheriff's office can purchase some refurbished units to put in their cars for AEDs.
So moved. Second.
Been properly moved and seconded that we authorize this pass-through appropriation. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution to approve an award of contract for comprehensive plan support services. Mr. Coon.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. This is a resolution from the TJPDC to assist us with up to 170 hours of staff time with the comprehensive plan update. You will see the quote detailed in your agenda packet that does include community survey support. However, staff is nearly complete with that. We're getting ready to send it out to directors and you all here shortly, but they, TJPDC did indicate that we could move those hours elsewhere, so it would be 170 hours for seventeen thousand, five forty-six. 170.
That's about a hundred dollars there.
Ninety. Yes, sir.
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? Been properly moved and seconded that we approve this contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Next is reports of officers and standing committees, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a committee report. We have the Lake Anna Advisory Committee, I'm sorry, the Lake Anna Advisory Committee report that met last month. We had two items that I'd like to give you a summary on, phosphorus remediation. There is obviously something in our consent agenda about a pass-through from money earmarked from the General Assembly. We received four proposals. They were graded by a review committee. Contract was awarded to one of the contractors that we worked with last year. The goal of this earmarked is to continue to work to remove phosphorus, which causes harmful algae blooms, which, if you've been at the lake this year, we've had none and the lake is doing much better from all levels, so. I'm not a scientist, I'm just reporting on what we know. We also had a discussion, where this room was full, on the no wake surfing buoy safety. We have asked, lack has asked the county to look into whether lack should play a role in this matter at all, and until we find out, that's all I had to report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Coven.
Do, Mr. Chairman, it'll be the last time I bring this up until next year. Commission on Aging, Summer Fling is Thursday, starts at eleven AM at the Betty Queen Center, and we're looking to have a good time. It's hot dogs, hamburgers, be some items, raffle-type items there, and some music, I think provided by Mr. Smith. So, anybody that comes is certainly welcome, particularly if you're sixty and older, probably you'd find it to be more entertaining than if you're younger than that, but everybody's welcome, so thank you.
Well, that means Mr. Barlow and I can attend.
That's exactly right, and myself.
And yourself, yeah.
That's right.
I'll be there.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and I want to speak for him, but we have an excellent current iteration of the Revenue Committee that has been hard at work on updates to the first iteration of the Revenue Committee's recommendations to you all, so my appreciation to Mr. Barlow and Mr. McCotter for their earnest efforts, and we anticipate potentially, if it pleases the two of them, to make a report to you in September.
Fine with the board. I have, I'm not sure this would come under committee reports, but I don't know where else I would add it, but I just wanted to mention the Louisa County Fair just wrapped up at Walton Park, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. I did not go on Thursday, but it was Thursday evening, but I was there on Friday and Saturday. I cannot say strongly enough how great the fair was. The attendance was overwhelming, the weather was beautiful. I mean, typically it's ninety-nine degrees or it's pouring the rain, and what we got was mid-seventies and no humidity. But a big shout out to the, all of the people that were involved, especially the fair board, which they're volunteers, the folks that did the livestock auction, the folks, the vendors, the people that put on the entertainment, the band. You know, the thing that I did come away with and had a conversation with someone today is they very quickly may outgrow Walton Park because of the attendance. I think someone told me that there was something like thirteen or fourteen hundred people there Saturday night for the band. And, you know, I, we were just talking earlier about, while the fair has rebranded itself, not the Ag Fair, but the Louisa County Fair, there's still a very heavy Ag influence, and the FFA, the four H Agriculture and Forestry bring a hundred and thirty million dollars a year into our economy. It may be a part of what we talk about as we move forward, that we, the county may have to look at a location, a permanent location for the county fair, and I think that would be an outstanding thing, that the revenue this generated, the people who attended, the people that came from out of the county, and I just want to give those folks a big shout out, because it was, and, you know, we had three young men, I will add this, we had three young men here speak at the last board meeting, and one young man who wrote me an email, I did go and I bid on his lamb. It turned out it was the grand champion lamb. Turns out I bought it, and turns out I found out I got the pill today, I paid thirteen hundred dollars for that lamb. But I donated it back to him, and Supervisor Jones said his mother may not have been too happy, you donated it back. I said, well, my wife would have been real unhappy if I'd have brought it home, so, but all that money goes to the FFA kids and the four H kids, so it is just, it was a hugely positive event for the county, so I just wanted to give them a shout out here. And a shout out, I had a cheeseburger from the FFA tent, and it was really good, and I found out you were the chef for about two and a half days, one of the chefs there, so it was really good. All right, do we have any board appointments? I don't have any, but I'm not trusting my agenda right this second, so.
No.
No board appointments? All right, on to the county administrators' report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my report is fairly lengthy. I apologize for that in your packet. It does include your monthly reports for the month of June. I'll draw just a couple of quick highlights from those. An updated report from the Water Authority that now includes aggregate nutrients permitted, so these are the ones that we were permitted by the state to discharge, and those which are used in the county. That's an important limit that we have in the county as development continues and your interest in preserving. The rural nature of the county continues, that's a good statistic to keep track of, and also their number of connections by year, for I believe the last ten years, is in there as well. We're looking at a rededication of the AUG building, as you know, that's now being used for the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office, looking at a rededication of that facility. It's nice, and involving the family in that, and looking at the October timeframe, so be on the lookout to clear your calendar if you can to join us that day. And just a quick update on the state park, on the skate park as well, the concrete's been poured, the ramp should be here soon, and we anticipate a completion in early fall, so that's very exciting. Starting on page one hundred and seventy-six in my report is an updated revised draft of the Chesapeake Bay Watershed Agreement. They are soliciting public input on that, so I encourage you to review it. It's, it's a little long, but not that long, and it's, it's pretty interesting reading if you have a chance to review that, and if you have any input, let me know or provide it directly. Dominion had an exceedance notification that they sent us regarding a groundwater exceedance issue that occurred recently, and that's on page two eighteen. Also, on page two hundred and fifty-six is an update from Dominion on the Valley Link Project, and that is the transmission line upgrade, the seven hundred and sixty-five kilovolt transmission line that is contemplated for the eastern side of the county. It's forecast to follow, to primarily follow the five hundred KV line that's already constructed in that area. They will begin public engagement in the fall, so that's coming soon. They will be hosting their own in-person meetings to engage the public and get input on proposed routes, and so be on the lookout for further information for that, that will begin soon. And then a couple of dates to make sure you've got on your calendar, another great event at Walton Park on the thirtieth of August, that's the county, the Labor Fest that Parks and Rec puts on, and their Fall Festival will be on October the eleventh. That concludes my prepared remarks. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Goodman? All right, that brings us to our public hearings. Since we do have six public hearings and it's seven twenty, because it'd probably take us a while to get through this, the board will take a ten-minute recess.
Ten-minute recess.
Before we do our public hearings, the board will take a ten-minute recess.
The first is in ordinance to approve or deny amendments to Chapter 86 Land Development Regulations, Article 3, Subdivisions, Division 4, Lot Requirements. Mrs. Buckler.
And Chairman Adams and members of the Board. The first public hearing is an amendment to Section 86-567 of the Land Development Regulations. To clarify that right-of-way dedication shown on a subdivision plat may be to the County of Louisa for public use or to the Commonwealth of Virginia as required by the Virginia Department of Transportation. The current language in 86-587 only refers to right-of-way dedication to the Commonwealth of Virginia and at the direction of the Virginia Department of Transportation. Right-of-way dedication may also be to the County of Louisa, and this information is shown on Page 314 of your packet. This matter was discussed during the June 16th amendments and directed back to the Planning Commission for Public Hearing, who voted at their July 10th meeting to forward a recommendation of approval to the Board. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions for Mrs. Buckman? All right, thank you, ma'am. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak? I have no cards on this ordinance. Then we'll close the public hearing and come back to the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table this. I've had a longstanding issue with the fact that you have prescriptive right-of-way and you're required to give right-of-way to VDOT that becomes un-prescriptive just because you do a subdivision. And this is certainly a great opportunity for us to work through that. We've had this public hearing. Staff would like to work on that maybe and bring it back at our first September meeting. Should I move? We table it, sir?
Properly moved. And second, we table this ordinance, public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is tabled. We'll bring it back after staff continues to work on it. Next is a resolution to approve or deny conditional use permit request CUP 2025-404. Amelia AD1 LLC doing business as Vanguard Renewables CBVC LLC applicant, Columbia Gas Transmission LLC, operating as Commonwealth Gasoline Corporation owner, TC Energy agent, presented by Mr. Eglin. Mr. Coon, Mr. Eglin.
Evening Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. Conditional use permit 2025-04 is a request for utility service major for a renewable natural gas unloading station for parcel 37-44 in the A2 zoning district in accordance with Section 86-154 permitted uses with a conditional use permit. The subject property shown on the current slide with the red stars located near the intersection of Brickhouse Road Route 637 and Poindexter Road Route 613 and the Patrick Henry election district. An existing compressor station for Columbia Gas Transmission is directly adjacent to the subject property on tax map 37-45 marked with a blue star on the current slide. The existing compressor station on the adjacent parcel was expanded through a conditional use permit number 2017-02, which can be found on Pages 501 through 503 of your packet. The 2040 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map designates the subject parcel 37-44 as rural. The subject property is adjacent to the Green Springs Historic District shown to the east and the Green Springs Agricultural and Forestal District to the north, as shown on the current slide. The county adopted a public facilities plan in 2024 as an amendment to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Staff has provided analysis of the proposed project's impact to public facilities, which can be found on Pages 320 and 340 of your staff packet. A neighborhood meeting was held in the Louisa County Public Meeting Room on May 12, 2025, which four citizens attended, and three citizens wrote letters to staff to express concerns. The applicant gave a brief presentation on that day. Due to safety concerns of the project's added truck traffic to Poindexter Road Route 613 and Brickhouse Road Route 637, the Planning Commission on July 10, 2025, recommended denial of the conditional use permit request for utility service major with a vote of six to zero, and a recommendation of 21 conditions for your consideration this evening, which can be found on Pages 322 to 325. After the Planning Commission meeting back in July, one condition has been requested to be modified by the applicant and another to be added to the list of conditions to be Condition 22, as shown on the current slide. So number one would be a modification to Condition 4, and then number two would be, would become Condition 22. This concludes staff's report, and the applicant has a presentation for you this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Eglin? Thanks, sir.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Board. What we're proposing to do is a virtual pipeline. What is a virtual pipeline? So we're in the business of taking cow manure on farms with anaerob digestion, and we create renewable natural gas. With that gas, what we're proposing is to truck the gas to the TCE compressor station that's off Brickhouse Road. Right now, it would be about two to three trucks daily coming in and out of the facility. Project location, as Mr. Eglin said, is Brickhouse. It's right by Poindexter. The virtual pipeline route that we're proposing is coming down Poindexter Road and making a right on Brickhouse and then a right into our facility. About the project, there's already an existing compressor station that's adjacent to it. We're proposing an unloading station at the site and then some truck pads. The site plan. So when we were going through the neighborhood meeting, some questions came up on the site plan. Originally, we had a driveway that wasn't shared with TC's existing driveway. We went back. We combined TC's existing driveway to mitigate the two driveways that were real close to each other there. We also had an issue with the adjacent neighbor where headlights from the trucks would be facing into her house. So we switched up the concept plan, and we moved the site location so that that way, as the trucks are being unloaded, the headlights are pointing towards the existing TCE compressor station. We also increased the buffer between Poindexter and the site to a 30-foot buffer off the road for trees, as well as the house that's adjacent to the east. Improvements. One of the other things that came up during our planning and zoning meeting was the road improvements. After looking and speaking to VDOT, there was a number of things that we decided that we can approve on. Real quick, I'm just going to bring up my traffic engineer so he could speak to this.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the Board. Yes, so we did review.
Sir, state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is John Pinchard. Thank you. So we did review Poindexter for the length of the route that the trucks would be driving on it. From a high-level review, we selected six locations, which we thought bared further study. So we're in the process of soliciting a survey firm to go and complete a survey of those areas, and that way we can complete a truck-driving model and work with VDOT staff to determine the suitability for those areas of the tightest turns, more or less, along that route, and work with VDOT staff to make necessary improvements to ensure safe access. So those six locations are shown on the screen here in your report. You can see that they do kind of span the length of Poindexter Road, and that's what we're looking at. We've been working briefly with Mr. Scott Thornton of the local office here, as well as with county staff.
As you can see, based on the screen up here, this is what the trucks look like going up and down the road. They're 40-foot trailers. They usually have about the equivalent of four scuba tanks inside of them that are housed in the containment area. In those areas, those tanks will hold the gas. One of the questions that get asked all the time is, can these tanks blow up? So the way that this works is, there's no oxygen in there. It's just methane. So there's nothing actual combustible in these. And if there was, in case of an accident, the way that these are designed is that the methane will be released out, and the methane's lighter, so it rises into the air.
You have four scuba tanks and a tractor-trailer?
Yes.
Like, I would put on my back?
No, no, no. They're huge tanks. They're similar.
They're not scuba tanks?
No, no. They're long, elongated tanks.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, not actual scuba tanks.
You used the word scuba tanks. I'm like, why are we not transporting them to pickup truck?
No, no.
Yeah. I have some.
You know, I'm good.
Oh, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I have just a couple of questions. You said two to three trucks a day.
Yep.
Is that going to be, that would either be four trips a day or six back and forth, in and out?
Uh, no. So the way we have it proposed right now, it's a maximum of 28 trucks Monday through Saturday.
20 trucks?
28 trucks in and out. So, and it's.
28 trucks in and out. So that's a lot different than saying two to three trucks.
Well, it's two to three trucks with a maximum of 28 trucks a week.
Per week or per day?
Per day.
What was that?
Per week? Or per day?
Per week.
So I think her question is, how many per day?
Oh, per day? It's a maximum of five. And the reason that we did five is because by cutting out Sunday, it would just allow us to schedule the deliveries around those times.
Okay, so I'm just, just to clarify. So the two to three trucks a day is not correct. It could be five, up to five trucks a day?
Depending on, it really depends on the logistics of getting in and out. It's not that there's more trucks coming. It's without the Sunday deliveries. It's the schedule because it's two trucks that are doing round trips from a farm.
28 trucks a day a week, okay. And what time period are you doing these runs?
Uh, so the way that we have the time right now is from 8:30. So there's two time periods.
Going back.
So the two time periods are 8:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and then 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
8:00 p.m. you're going to be running these trucks at night in the dark.
I thought it said 7:00 to 7:00.
That's, that's pretty late in the dark down this, these roads, okay?
Idea behind this was to stay off the roads when the school buses were on the roads.
Okay, and then you were talking about the roads, proposed changes to them with VDOT. Is this something you've not worked out with VDOT? So we don't really know if the roads will be widened or not in these sections.
Yeah, that's a great question. It is something we're still investigating, absolutely. It was a request from the county to make sure this was fully studied. So we're in the process of reviewing it with VDOT. My understanding is that the format is that there's a, a minimum amount of cash that Vanguard is putting in account to cover the road improvements with county visibility into the approval process of the VDOT permit.
So, what?
Now, ma'am, hold on, hold on. That's not how we run a meeting. We'll have an opportunity to speak. Can't hear?
I would happily re-answer the question.
Could you please?
Yeah. Is this better?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, so we are still working with VDOT to determine the road improvements necessary for safe access. That's correct. This was a request from Louisa County's staff to make sure that this has been fully thought through. And so that is something that we're currently working on, and we'll be working with Scott's team at the local VDOT office to make sure that this is meeting all of their standards. The county will have visibility into that process, and Vanguard has agreed with the county to put a certain amount of money into an account to cover the cost of the projected construction, to ensure that, you know, the county has an ability to complete the projects should anything happen.
The county has the ability to complete the project?
Sorry.
So the way we're proposing is, we'd be working on the project, but we put up $150,000 cash bond of the county while we work with this through VDOT on understanding the road improvements. So we'd be basically committing $150,000 road improvement along Poindexter Road.
So you don't. Follow-up question to what she just said. Know how much it's going to cost because you haven't gotten a plan solidified with VDOT yet, correct?
That's correct.
So how do we know the $150,000 cash bonds or not? We either do or we don't.
That's correct. It's still something that we're working through. Knowing what, you know, looking at the lengths and the number of places that could probably need to be improved, based on preliminary conversations, $150,000 should be more than enough. I don't think that'll be a problem, but it's not something we can say with certainty at this point in time.
Mr. Chairman? I interrupted. Hold on. Will you finish, Supervisor?
Um, for now.
Sorry. Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight. Your trucks that we saw, they're very nice. Are they all going to look that way, or they're just really fancy ones? Not that it really matters.
No, they're all going to look that way.
Okay. So are those drivers your staff, your company staff, or those contractors?
Uh, that's contracted with a third party that we use.
Okay. What is going on currently at the compressor station? Is it just compress the gas and shoot it down the next station, or?
I believe so. I'm a representative for Vanguard. I'm not a representative for TC.
Okay. Understood. And all this raw material, gas, what have you, it's not, it's coming from a different county. Is it coming from Amelia County?
Yes, Amelia, sir.
Okay. So we're, we're taking Amelia's gas, and we're, we're asked to shoulder the burden of whatever impact it may have in the community and help you all make some money. I get it. Thank you.
Who were the gentlemen that stood in the back? You kind of looked like they wanted to come up. Were they with you?
That's, his name's Cedric Klein. He's with TC if you want him to answer.
I do have a question for him.
Yeah, sir. Make sure you introduce yourself for the record and use the mic.
Can you hear me? I'm Cedric Klein. I'm the land representative for Columbia Gas, TC Energy. TC Energy owns Columbia Gas Transmission. We are a transmission company for natural gas and through.
Either pull it up or lean down into it.
Okay.
Not made for tall people.
I'll go ahead, ma'am.
I did have a question.
Yes.
Why is there, because I know Columbia Gas in my district, in the Green Springs district, has locations that are in a more primary roads, Route 15, Route 22, that there's, why are we not looking at roads where tractor-trailers are already instead of little backroads? Is there nowhere else in Louisa County more primary roads to run these trucks?
Not to get to this facility, no, where we're.
There's no other facility to inject this gas?
We have another facility about 26 miles, going back toward Charlottesville, Boswell's Tavern.
Yeah?
We don't have.
The one next to Mechanicsville?
Waldorf, or, I'm not familiar with all the roads and names.
I don't think it's 26 miles from there.
It's, that's on average what it usually is. I'm not sure, but it could be.
It's a little closer, I'm sure. But, so that, that sits on the main road, 22, right there in Mechanicsville. Well, not Mechanicsville, but Mechanicsville Baptist Church sits next to it.
Across the primary road, and our facility's back up in the woods there.
Would that not be a more suitable location for trucks to come in and out?
The only access road that we have into that facility goes through, I want to call it, it's a Waldorf Road. It's a gravel road that goes to a community, and we would be taking that right through housing and everything that's along Waldorf Road. So that's not really what you want. Also, that facility doesn't have the capacity at this point, and there's another project that we're working on now for that facility.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Williams? Thank you. Your line starts in West Virginia?
The line that comes, that feeds in, this originates out of West Virginia, but it actually comes from the Gulf Coast up through multiple states.
Okay. So can you tell me in the 40-mile vicinity here, how many compressor stations you have and where they are?
We have the Boswell compressor station that we referenced here, and we have a Goosling compressor station, which would be downstream. It's off Hermitage Road next to the golf club there. Folks are familiar with it.
Oh, yeah.
Near CarMax and Capital One in that area. There's a golf country club there, right next to it, and we have no more room with that facility.
I need, just need to understand. What does it mean you have no more room? The pipeline's, the pipeline's full. You can't fill the pipeline here.
There's no more land to use at that facility to add in what you saw here, referenced for Vanguard.
So, so let me make sure I understand. What they're doing is they're not coming and dumping in your facility. They're building a facility next to your facility that will tie into your transmission line?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
First off, thank you.
Thank you.
You hear me? I'm trying to make sure. All right. The current facility.
Louisa, yes, sir.
The one in Louisa. How many trucks are currently going there?
None right now. It's all pipeline.
So it's all piped in right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, would that increase the capacity here in Louisa?
The product will be injected there. There is a meter station downstream. Call it Louisa School Station, where some of that gas will be, depending on the need, metered into that facility and used in this area.
Okay. I have another question based on that.
Mr. Williams?
So, so you're not implying that without this, we'll be short on gas here, are you?
No, sir.
Okay. I didn't, I just wanted to be clear that you weren't implying that. Okay. Thank you.
Any, any more questions for this gentleman?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Eglin has, if any more questions, Mr. Eglin has my information. I'll be happy at any point to answer any questions.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Where's the other, where's he at? He's over there.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. Are you building your own compressor?
We building our own compressor?
Yeah.
So we have.
Do you put it in the pipeline?
So we have three skid-bound units. One of them's a compressor, and one of it's a decant unit.
So do you have to be, maybe this is a better question for the TC Energy guy. Does he have to be near a compressor station to inject in your pipeline?
Come up here before you answer. Come back, come back to the mic.
I don't think what he's talking about, they will have the ability, once it's tapped, we do a tap into our sys, sorry about, do a tap into our pipeline system with the equipment that they're bringing into the site. They could possibly use that to force, to push gas into the pipeline.
So they don't have to be near a compressor facility. They are compressing it and pushing it in the pipeline themselves and metering it. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Got to know to ask the right questions some days.
Any other questions? Thank you. You finished, Mr. Eglin? All right, I'll open the public hearing. I do have cards. These cards?
Yes, a bunch of them.
Yeah.
I have one.
So when you come up, state your name and your voting district. I'll give you three minutes. I'll give you a warning when you have 15 seconds. So the first card I have is Charlotte Morford.
Good evening, and thank you for all you do. I'm Charlotte Morford. I vote in Patrick Henry. Hello, Mr. Barnes, Ms. Jones. I've lived on Poindexter Road for almost 25 years. With the advent of GPS, the amount of truck traffic on Poindexter has increased dramatically. If you want to make some revenue goals, try policing the speed on Poindexter Road. It is full of blind curves. We are routinely run off the road by these trucks. Earlier this year, a cement truck went flying by. There was a clonk that landed in the ditch. They shut down Poindexter Road for hours. They shut down Poindexter Road for hours to get the right equipment to pull it out of the ditch. I'd also note that Vanguard is based in New England. They are not based here in Louisa. Their sons and daughters are not on the school buses that ply this road. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Karen Holback. Was I close?
Karen Holback?
I got the Karen part right.
Congratulations. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and professional members of Louisa's I live on Poindexter Road in the Patrick Henry, in the Patrick Henry District. And I want to note two things. One, that concerns me a bit about some of the information we've heard from Vanguard to the, to the effect that methane is not explosive. Methane is highly flammable and explosive in a oxygen atmosphere, and I believe that's what we have here. And if we're concerned about an accident, well, just think about the flare from the top of a refinery. That's methane. I also want to mention that we have heard dozens of nods and, and support for maintaining the rural character of Louisa County tonight on a number of different topics. That is front and center on this issue. Poindexter Road, Route 613, is a scenic byway. The characteristics of a scenic byway are natural beauty, rural charm, agricultural character. The roads must have these and other characteristics to be designated a scenic byway, so someone thought they existed and they were important when this road was designated a scenic byway. The state of Virginia says that for a scenic byway, there must be a corridor management plan that provides detailed information about what the route's scenic assets are and how they will be protected. I'm quoting. So my questions, and I do have them, are this. Which other sites did you consider and evaluate as possible sites for this gas injection station? And what were the pros and cons of each one? And how was this site judged to be against all those criteria, the best possible one? Those are my questions. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, ma'am. Next. I do have a card from Dan Patton, who is in Patrick Henry, does not want to speak, but does want to make note that he's opposed to this project. Next is Amanda Welch.
Hi, I'm Amanda Welch. I vote in the Patrick Henry District. I live off Poindexter, about a mile, and I travel the road quite frequently. And I did want to thank you guys for your discussion of protecting the rural character of the district and of the support of ag forestal districts. And one of the, and which this is in the middle of or on the edge of, as well as being on the edge of a national historic landmark. But the ag forestal districts, as part of being in one, because our farm is in one, you're supposed to have, to consider it when you're deciding on any kind of development or zoning issues. And they're asking you to change the use of this particular corner, which I would challenge almost any truck driver to turn right off of Poindexter on the Brickhouse Road with a tractor-trailer. But this is not the place for it. It should be taken in consideration that it's an ag forestal district and it's, it's an agricultural use area. There's, there's tractors up and down the road all the time. There's trailers up and down all the road, all the time. There are cows on the road and there are, you know, my friends and neighbors driving on the road, just trying to go about their business. And having to deal with any more large trucks on the road would be dangerous. And I don't see any driving principle as to why that you need to give them this gift of being able to use this particular spot. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Robin Patton.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Robin Patton. I live in the Patrick Henry Voting District. I'm on 4116 East Jack Duett Road, and so Poindexter Road is the corridor by which I get in and out of the turn to my house every single day. That road, we've all been in the environment where people are talking about taxes and talking about the expense of government and talking about maintaining things. That road, Poindexter Road, has been falling to pieces for a few years now. And we have all in the neighborhood, before these people showed up, been talking about how the road was breaking down, how the shoulders were not level with the road. And in fact, in some places, if you drop a wheel off with your car, there's a pretty good chance you're going to flip. This particular site is, if, if you're familiar with Poindexter Road, we used to say it's the curve there by Donalee's or by Berea Baptist Church. This turn is not far from this notorious curve, where I guarantee you, anybody with the rescue squad that's still here knows, every year, somebody plows through the fence on that curve because it's tight and it comes up on people unexpected. So in the principles of land use, everything about where this site is located is absolutely inconsistent with the resources that the government provides to make things happen in a particular community. Plus, it's inconsistent with the activities that are there already. I heard people in this room at the beginning of the evening during the public comment period, talking about how this board's responsibility, primary responsibility, was to serve the people of Louisa County. The people of Louisa County are here telling you this is inconsistent with this area. I don't, I have nothing against the technology. I think it's a great idea. This is just not the place. And I've done a little deep dive. There are many, of many places closer to Amelia where these guys could be doing this project. And it makes me suspicious about why they want to do it here. I would like to point out, as Ms. Jones did, they're, they're not even presenting you with all of the information that they say they're standing behind. So they have no right, there's no by right to do this. They have to get a gift from you of a conditional use permit in order to move this project forward. They're not invested in Louisa County. So far as I can see, Louisa will only be punished and obligated by this request.
15 seconds.
And I think it, it should be denied as your planning commission, who investigated by going out and driving the roads, recommended. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to apologize ahead of time. Nicholas Vandenhorm?
Yeah, you got it right. Yeah.
Did I get that right?
Apology necessary.
Karen's up. I apologize to Karen again.
It's Dutch heritage. There you go. It's a small, narrow, winding road. I will start.
Yeah.
My name is Nicholas Vandenhorm, as you pronounce rightly, correctly. I am at Green Springs District. I live in Green Springs. It's a very narrow, small, winding road. Why do I say this? When I am sitting here, I hear all of you talking about agriculture, keeping agriculture as a main part of income. And what are you doing? I have never heard of a poor oil company. They all have money. Ask an alternative. It's just injection of methane. And don't say that methane is not toxic. It is not a good product. To drive into the cities, they have to go by byways and pass it.
It's true, they can't get through tunnel.
So I think that you should not allow this. They have not done their homework 100%. They jumped on you by saying, oh, two trucks, and suddenly it runs up to 28. If there is more capacity required in the trunk line, they can just need more methane. What happens then? You get more of these ugly bladder tanks there. It is a disgrace. They don't need it. They can find alternatives. And I, another fact is, I think that you, as a planning commission, should do more homework in way how you want to really have Louisa County being seen and what is going to be the future. And what is going to be the industries that you want to attract? And don't sell short for that. Nature is important and agriculture, preserve it and be careful with it. Look what happened on the number 15 road, I-15. It's a disgrace. You got all the truck drivers and the trucks on the side. It's pollution everywhere. And then let's not talk about the development of the Walmart area. It's not good. Should do a better job and should cancel this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Lee Knapp.
I'm in the Patrick Henry District. I moved to Louisa about 20 years ago from what used to be a rural area, Western Henrico County. We all know what happened there, Short Pump. That used to be all farms. So I would encourage you to keep your attitude that, of rural nature of this county. I live on Poindexter, on one of those blind curves. Even with just cars coming around from my driveway, sometimes it's a little tricky to get out when they come around so quickly. When he showed the picture of that truck, I can't believe it. That big of a truck coming down that tiny road with all those curves in a, in a conservation district? That is not, this is not the place for it. So I highly urge you to just vote against it. And as everyone else has said, you're just going to hear the same thing over and over again, to find another place for it. This is not consistent with what we all sat through, listening to your really, really good goals for this county up until this point. So I encourage you to, to get them to find somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ralph Brickley.
I'm Ralph Brickley. I live in the Patrick Henry District. Fitzgerald Barnes is my supervisor and has been for 35 years. I'd like to, to give him condolences. Loss of his spouse is last week, and I feel for him. I drive Poindexter every time I go south, west, north. If I go east, I'm down to Courthouse Road. Poindexter is, is a trip. You don't know if you're going to hit a concrete truck, a timber truck, or a sludge truck. This afternoon, I came back from physical therapy and I met a sludge truck right at Foster's Creek Bridge. Well, was that tricky? Poindexter, really have to watch. You have to slow down and give way for all the trucks. It doesn't make any difference whether it's a 40-footer, and we have 40, 40-footers on there. You know, we advertise this county as a cut-through to Fredericksburg, and many of those trucks take Poindexter to do that instead of going down the Courthouse Road. It, it's amazing. But we elect you to take care of about 99% of our problems, and you do a good job. The other 1%, we need to give you a nudge every now and then, how we feel about it. And I know the planning commission got it right, and they worked for you, so I know you all will make the right decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So we did receive a form online from Gretchen Pelham?
Is she here?
Who is opposed, but I, it says she's not attending the meeting, but she wanted that, is she here? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Same thing with Nicolette Merrill Smith?
Is she here?
Who's opposed, says she will not be attending the meeting. Just make sure she's not here. Okay. Same thing with Grovesner Merrill Smith, opposed, will not be attending the meeting. Make sure they're not here. Okay. Is she?
It's him.
It's him.
If you're here and you want to speak, you certainly can. I'm just reading the card.
You want to speak?
Okay. Next is Rose Marie Merrill Smith. I will be in attendance, so do you wish to speak?
I had my hip replaced three weeks ago, so I don't know.
Hello, I'm Rose Marie Merrill Smith from the Patrick Henry District, living at 2701 Poindexter Road. And I'm glad to see all of you. I'm here to ask you to not, as a board supervisor, deny the conditional use permit requested by Columbia Gas Transmission LLC. And last week, I emailed all of you photographs of one truck I followed just randomly down Poindexter one day, who, I can also show you the video, but he went down the road probably the majority of the time on turns, ran people off the road, sped by, where our farm is, sped by there down the middle, where there have been numerous head-on, head-on collisions. As he came around the corner that Robin was talking about there, just on the other side of, north side of the South Anna Bridge, he, he was going quite quick, and there were five cars in the other lane, and he, his brakes hard, they all kind of veered over, and then he went off into the, off into the ditch on the right to avoid them. And that was just some random truck. He actually turned onto Brickhouse, I don't know where he went from there, but I was like, wow, this is, this is pretty interesting. And so I just, what I don't understand, again, is, and this, a lot of this has not even discussed by everybody, it's hard to believe that some, an hour and a half drive from Amelia, someplace Amelia County, I looked, you know, somewhere there, it's about an hour and a half drive north up through Savannah County. And they're going to come down our road, and these guys, he said, the same truck drivers are driving this. So they are going to go, they're being paid by the hour. They're going to be driving down Poindexter Road. The truck I followed went 45 miles an hour, and the only way you can make, go down the road 45 miles an hour is to be down, go right down the middle of the road. And so these guys are going to be on a time, they're going to be trying to get up and down the road, they're going to, we're going to meet us. And I also had one of these sludge trucks, we had to slow down coming here on Poindexter as the sludge truck was off in our lane, coming right at us. So that was right before we got here. I think the person who tried, got the scenic byway was Dr. David Morgan, when he was the Green Springs Supervisor a couple decades ago. And we all thought that meant that our road wasn't going to have semis on it, and apparently that's not the case. My husband and I, back 25 years ago, put our 350 acres in conservation usement with-
15 seconds, ma'am.
Virginia Outdoors Foundation, and we want this place to stay rural. So I hope you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have two names on this email? Susan Barnaboe?
Yes.
I got that?
Yep.
All right. Do you wish to speak?
No, I'm not her, I just don't know her name.
Oh, yeah. Okay. And Angelo? I'm not even going to try.
LaMoscola.
Yeah, what he said. Are they here?
Okay.
They're, they're, they're in opposition, so they're, they're not here. So that's all the cards that I have. Is there anyone else that would wish to address? Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Rivers. I live on Poindexter Road, and I vote in Patrick Henry District. I sent Mr. Fitzgerald Barnes and Ms. Jones a picture from my front yard. At any time, I can show you dually tire tracks through my front yard where the trucks have come off the road. These aren't semis. These are simply dualies. When we're talking about the truck drivers, these truck drivers are not bad drivers. It is physically impossible for a semi truck to stay in his lane on Poindexter Road. Poindexter Road is like 10 miles long. Poindexter Road is like 10 miles long. Our road frontage is three tenths of a mile. We've had cars bust through our fence into our horse pasture. I had one car upside down in my front yard and I've had my culvert destroyed by cars hitting it numerous times. There simply isn't room on Poindexter Road for large trucks. And there's no way that they can drive it safely. It's just impossible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak, address the board? Anyone else wish to address the board on this public hearing? Okay, see, nobody else, right? All right, scene down, I'm going to close the public hearing and come back to the board. Yes, Mr. Williams.
Thank you. I was probably not too terribly opposed to this tonight before. I asked a question, do you need to be near a compressor station? And the fine gentleman from the pipeline company said, no, they don't. I think you have tried to pick the lowest hanging piece of fruit. This is an opinion. You have a lease for a nominal fee from Columbia Gas to put your piece there, which benefits them because you're transmitting through their pipeline. You've probably felt like you didn't have to, or didn't want to drive into Henrico or something with a little bigger municipality. Unfortunately, you're on a small road and I just don't think it's appropriate. So I, I think maybe if you find a location that's a little more suitable next to a major road, maybe I'd probably give it some consideration. But given the circumstances, Ren, I'm going to have a real hard time accepting this tonight.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roberts. First of all, Ralph, I don't know about 35 years, I've been around a while. I don't know about 35 years. First of all, you know, I've always said that citizens in Louisa, when they come before us, they're always respectful. And I've always respected that of people. And when I'm wrong, I admit I'm wrong. When I'm right, I'm, I admit I'm right. And Ralph, I ain't going to hang my head on this Walmart and loathe, I was part of that, so I'm not going to let that one go. But when you look at the citizens here, and I'll be honest, I'm always respectful of the people, but I'm like Mr. Williams. I looked at, if I left church over there, I cut through Poindexter and Brick House come through by Foster Creek and cone up that way. And I came in today and I said, okay, let's see what the business can offer, what they're going to do. And young man, I'm going to be honest, and I'm not being disrespectful, but you guys did a terrible job of presenting. When you didn't know what the cost of the road to fix, I went, I went, dudes, you just shot yourself in the foot. You got to know your business when you speak before local government. You got to. I mean, it's just like, if I give my boy a pair of shoes and I give him $75 and a shoe costs $150, he ain't going to get them shoes. It's just the way it is. So I was really disappointed in that because I'm, me and Mr. Williams and Lala, we got ag background and my undergrad degree is agriculture and I'm about as business in ag. But I can't tonight support this CUP because it was poorly, poorly, poorly presented. So I move that we denied it.
Second.
Yes.
Do you have any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to deny the CUP signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The CUP is unanimously denied.
Some people won't leave.
If you want to stay, you can stay. It gets funner after this, I'm not sure that's a word. I mean, I just got your names, don't leave. I mean, I just figured it out, so. Thank you all for coming and expressing your opinions to the board.
They were terrible, terrible presentations.
You're not going to put it down next to Herman and Chunder?
That's right.
I'm going to steal this. Just to keep this to them. Yeah, I asked somebody to keep it.
I was stealing it from you.
Because, you know, Mama needs this. They need to keep this for 30 years from now. I didn't know somebody would get it to me tonight, but they said, hey, can I have two copies?
We're going to move on to the next resolution to approve or deny conditional use permit and special exception request, CUP 2025-06, SA 25, 2025-03, Selco partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless applicant, Louisa School Board owners, Stuart Squire agent, Mrs. Buckler.
Good evening, Chair.
Follow that, Mrs. Buckler.
Good evening again, Chairman Adams and members of the board. This public hearing for CUP 2025-06 is a request by the applicant Selco partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless and the Louisa County School Board for a 195-foot tall telecommunications tower with a four-foot lightning rod for a total height of 199 feet in accordance with Section 86-154 permitted uses. Approval would also allow for the wireless communication facility greater than 100 feet in height in accordance with Section 86-665 of the Land Development Regulations. The application also includes a request for a special exception from the board for a reduction of the required balloon testing period from four hours to three hours during the testing. The applicant's balloon became entangled in the existing broadband tower and had to be cut free and ended an hour early.
Broadband tower?
Mm.
The broadband tower? Do we have a broadband tower?
The property subject to this request is taxman parcel 8368 located on Jewett School Road at Jewett Elementary School. It is 64 acres with the lease area approximately 5,600 square feet and it is in the Jackson election district. The 24 Louisa future land use map designate, designates this area of Louisa County as rural and the proposed tower will replace the existing broadband tower and help mitigate tower proliferation and protecting the rural character of the Jackson District. The county's wireless telecommunications consultant, Al Terrace, has provided an analysis of the application, which can be found in packet pages 565 to 571. The public's facility plans adopted by the county in 2024 as an amendment to the comprehensive plan has been reviewed and staff's analysis and review are on packet pages 510 and 511. A neighborhood meeting was held on June 11th at which no citizens attended and on July the 10th, the planning commission found the conditional use permit request to be in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan and voted to recommend approval of the conditional use permit with 22 conditions for consideration and those are in your packet on pages 513 through 515. On July the 31st and after the planning commission's recommendation, staff reviewed the conditions further and wanted to provide clarification on condition number 21. And in your packet, it includes both the recommendation by the planning commission for that condition, but additional language is recommended by staff, which would state that CUP 2025-06 shall supersede CUP 2017-10 and the existing broadband tower on site will be removed by the applicant in fulfillment of their contractual obligations when directed by and at no cost to Louisa County. And that was to clarify some questions that came up during the planning commission meeting.
Ms. Buckler, if they take the tower down, then CUP 2017-10 would not be applicable. Would that be accurate, ma'am?
Correct.
Okay, so we have to put there that it supersedes it?
Correct.
Okay. Very good.
That concluded staff's report and if you have any questions regarding the conditions?
I just have a comment. My planning commissioner and I met with these guys for just a few minutes. We told them we welcomed better cell service in the Jackson District and look forward to their CUP. So I'm looking, or to, I'm looking forward to hearing their brief presentation so we can move on.
Mr. Barlow.
One of the other discussions that came up was the tower that they're going to be removing, that is one of our broadband towers. And I've been assured that that tower is of no, no use and it's a chance for it to get dismantled and not cost account.
No call.
Yep. One additional item on condition number 22, there is language that was recommended by the planning commission that the applicant will provide space on the new tower to maintain continuous service in the interim until firefly is available. Based on that, the planning commission recommendation, the applicant provided additional language, which is on the screen is option number two. So you all, we need to look at those two conditions and.
We have any, I'm going to ask this, broadband users on that tower?
No, sir.
Well, I just want to say the words because that's what this is for, right?
Right.
Yeah, so we don't plan on using this.
Right.
We're not, we're not going to transfer equipment to this new tower.
The county, Mr. Reddick just brought up a good point there. The county does have equipment on the tower for its own uses.
That's for fire and EMS stuff.
Yeah, for that's for animal shelter and landfill. So once firefly is in, it's no longer needed.
Firefly's not the landfill and animal shelter yet?
Not yet. Connecting now is the site says.
What's that means connecting now?
They're literally.
Yeah, could, should be soon.
So probably before they get the tower up?
Yes.
Good chance. Okay, good, thank you.
I think this, this was just an interim measure in case firefly wasn't connected.
Sounds like yes.
Would be able to do that.
Any other questions for Mrs. Buckler? Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant here to give a short presentation?
Yes.
Short presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Lori Schweller, attorney with Williams Mullen, representing Verizon Wireless. And with me is Stuart Squire, who's the zoning manager with GD Insights. So we are requesting your approval of a conditional use permit. You're familiar with the location at Jewett School. And we are requesting a conditional use permit because those are, towers are permitted in the A2 agricultural district only by conditional use permit. So as you know, there is an existing CUP that applies to the tower that's there now. It's a 180-foot guy wired tower and that was, that conditional use permit was approved for use by Louisa County for the broadband program, which is no longer in existence. And so though we initially suggested we could simply do this tower administratively as a replacement, we learned that that conditional use permit is basically defunct and so it would have to be amended. So we might as well do a new CUP, which is, which is why we're proceeding with this. We could not put the Verizon equipment on the existing guy wired tower because it's not structurally sufficient to do that. So we need a new tower. And then, of course, as you know, the tower that's there now will be removed.
Can you stay there just for a second? Can you go back to that slide?
Sure. I think so.
Just a quick clarification and you're probably giving the next presentation as well, so maybe this will go through both.
Yes, sir.
But the last bullet point says the new CUP requested for the new tower, which will have co-location opportunities for at least three commercial providers and county dishes. It's my understanding, there was some, there was some discussion at the planning commission and seemed to be a little bit of confusion among the public, exactly what co-location on a wireless communication tower means. And it, there was an effort made to tie that in to some of the data center campuses that are here. That has absolutely no tie-in, does it?
No, sir. There's no relation between this project and any data center in the county. This, this project is to provide wireless service to citizens, citizens in the county as they're in their homes, their businesses, driving along the roads. It's needed because of the growth in the county.
Could you explain briefly, I mean, I don't want to beat this to death, but there was a lot of discussion. Could you explain what it means for co-location opportunities on that tower? I mean, it seems self-explanatory, but I want to get this on the record.
No, I'll be happy to. When a tower is 199 feet tall, as we're proposing here with this monopole and Verizon will be at the top, there is plenty of room, plenty of vertical space on that pole for other wireless providers.
AT&amp;T, T-Mobile.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
To, to rent space on that tower and put their antennas on the tower and their ground equipment in the compound at the base of the tower. So that means you, you get three providers for one tower and that's what you want. That's what the county looks for, is fewer towers, co-location opportunities. So with this tower provided in this location, you have space for other wireless providers to come in and use this tower. This is why before we have our pre-application meeting with staff, we actually send letters to all of the wireless providers and tell them, we're about to have a meeting, we're about to propose a new tower, we're just letting you know in case you're interested. That's a county requirement in the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for the question. So I'm just showing you an overall of the, of the property. All of the setbacks are far exceeded, setbacks to the boundaries, setbacks to the nearest residences. The existing tower will be about 81 feet from the, the new tower. This is the site layout again, there's a monopole in the center of a lease area, it's a 75 by 75-foot lease area with a compound in the middle of it. We are requesting a waiver of the landscaping requirement. What we're proposing instead is opaque slats in the fencing. And this is just to show you, you can see in this slide what I described earlier. So on the left is the existing guy wired tower, on the right is, is a schematic of the proposed monopole. And you can see on this monopole, four sets of antennas. And so you can.
Which is Verizon's plus three co-locations.
Right.
And it's only 15 feet taller than the existing tower that's there.
It's only, it's, the existing is 180 and this one is proposed at 195 with a four-foot lightning rod.
So, and then, and the existing tower is coming down.
The, under the terms of the lease, the, the lessy must remove this tower if it receives a notice from the landlord, which is the school board, to remove the tower within three years. And so they must remove it.
We'll send it out, it's no problem.
And so this slide was, if you needed details about the existing antennas and dishes moving over to the new, that was a topic of discussion at the planning commission. I think that's become a moot point. It sounds like we're not, county doesn't need those to be moved over, but they may be moved over. I mean, the, the terms of the lease are that there's free space for the county, there's 10 feet.
At 130 feet and 140 feet.
Right, there's a 10-foot vertical area reserved for the county if the county wants to use it. So. So, so the condition that I suggested to staff after the planning commission meeting is just the highlights of, of what is in the lease already. Space is free, there's 10 feet of vertical space, there's 25 feet of ground equipment space and it's subject to the lease because there are a lot of terms in the lease.
I don't know, it's school board.
But there's the proposed condition, I, I know it's a long one that I suggested, the proposed condition by staff, we have no objection to that condition as long as it says subject to the lease. So that's completely up to you. We're, we're, we're under contract with the landlord. So I, I don't know if it's necessary to tell you this, but this, the cell tower is needed. There are no co-location opportunities in the area. The closest wireless towers are a mile and a quarter to the northwest.
It's on Bethany Church Road or by Locust Creek Fire Department.
And then, and then there's one to northwest, three miles away. This is too far away. Verizon is located on all the towers within a four-mile radius, so we need a tower in this area. So the last things I have to present to you are the balloon test photographs, if you're interested in seeing the visual impact.
Mr. Burns, I was just trying to.
If we didn't, if we didn't have a tower that was 80 feet away, if it was 180 feet tall, it'd be different, but we do. tall, it'd be different, but we do.
Any questions for the applicant?
I don't have a question.
Mr. Mr. Goodman?
I can go last if you first.
I just wanted to say, you know, I thank you for trying to, all of us know, driving throughout our county, there's dead zones everywhere, and you're trying to have a call and you get dropped and residents, so thank you for trying to solve that problem. And having our county and our residents have cell service throughout the county and, and just solve it, so, thanks.
Yes, ma'am, there's a recognition that, that more service, better service is needed, and not only these two, Stuart worked on one recently that you approved, which is under construction now, and another one's coming down the pike, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes, ma'am. I may already know the answer to this, but I think Verizon reached out to me about this time, or maybe in the fall last year, and that was about the time that, that the provider on the existing tower then ceased to provide service because Firefly became available in the area. So anyway, long introduction to a question that I may have already gotten an answer to already. Does Verizon, if so noticed by the county, does Verizon contemplate simultaneously erecting the new tower and taking down the old tower? Or does the lease provide for a longer period of time? I heard you say up to three years. I can't remember if we could give you that notice anytime for three years, or if you could have three years after the notice to take it down.
The, the former, during the three-year period, the county can give the lesssee notice anytime, but after that three-year period is over, there's no obligation on the part of the lesssee.
The question is, how long do you have to take it down?
There's no provision in the lease for that.
Maybe we should, maybe we should put one in there. I mean, something, I mean, you could take three years.
Yeah, I, that's, that was my recollection as well, and, and I realized as I was thinking about it that we don't have, you know, that's why I was wondering, you know, what Verizon contemplates, you know, if we gave you notice, would you take two years to take it down? Because I, I'm not sure, I don't want to speak for the board, especially before they vote, but I'm not sure that the board or the citizens want two towers in the area if we're absolutely certain we only need one.
Understood.
If it would be done, that's one project.
Okay.
Did you...
Where could we put that in writing and how could we do that?
Well, the, the lease doesn't currently have a deadline for how long it will take to take the tower down, so if you want to put that in the condition related to the...
How about we could just add it to the...
What page is that condition on?
Well, there was a memo that went out that had the updated provision 21. So we could say that, so the language that Ms. Buckler read was CUP 25, 2025-06 shall supersede the old CUP, and the existing broadband tower on site will be removed by the applicant in fulfillment of their contractual obligations when directed by it and no cost to Louisa County. If we just added within 12 months, be removed by the applicant within 12 months...
Of notice.
Yes, of notice, yeah.
What, what number is that?
Uh, it's numbered, it's condition 21. It was in a memo that went out, as Ms. Buckler noted last week.
Within 12 months?
Yes. If that's, if that's okay, and I, I should have thought of this beforehand, I'm sorry.
Just a question. He had just finished stating that it could be done simultaneously.
Well, it can be, but he'll, he'll have up to 12 months to do it. The question is, he'll have a defined time it has to be done by, or it being violation of a CUP. That's, that's, that's a kicker, right? Right, Christian?
And that, that's acceptable, that, that deadline's acceptable, yes.
I mean, he can do it in one month.
We're going, but that's going to be in the conditions?
Yeah, that's, we're talking about adding it to that CUP.
Okay, that sounds good.
Sorry, I have a question, sir.
All right, any other questions for the applicant? Seeing, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the board on this CUP? Yes, ma'am.
In town of Louisa, you certainly not going to come talk about the good people of the Jackson District and not, and deny them cell service, I would hope.
I read the entire 700-page document.
Good for you.
My question...
Even though we know your name.
Vicki Hart, Louisa District, thank you, thank you for reminding me. Somebody interrupted me.
Yes, they did.
My only question, I, I love the fact that we're going to get more coverage, as being an ex-rescue worker is very important, and the fact that I would love to have my cellphone work. My question is, the FAA table requires notification if you exceed 200 feet, and I see this as 199. However, on page 567 of my copy, I don't know about your copy, under item four, structure height, it said the tower will not exceed the 300-foot maximum. So is it 199 or is it 300? That is my only question.
Well, 567 is our, is our, is our recommendation from our person. Is that right? Am I right on that? This is your, this is our consultant that says it should be okay as long as it's less than 300 feet. Our consultant says it's okay. They say they're building 199 feet tall.
So this says it will not exceed the 300-foot maximum. Where does the 300-foot maximum come from?
It's a recommendation from our, not to exceed from our person.
Then the question would be, why would we even put that in there?
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the board on this public hearing? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, come back to the board. Mr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman. I move we approve the, the CUP. Hold on, I get a little more out than that. The CUP and the special exception with adding within 12 months of notice by the county at the end of item number 21. Agreed.
And selecting option two for number 22, correct?
Yes. Agreed, yes.
What, I have a question. What, what constitutes notice by the county?
A letter.
That's not something we can give tonight?
Well, let's wait, I mean, they haven't even started, they haven't applied for building permit yet. They got, they got some stuff.
We still have equipment on the tower right now, Mr. Barlow, that's generating for our purposes.
It's feeding the animal shelter and the landfill right now, so.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution to approve or deny conditional use permit, CUP 2025-07, Selco Partnership, all the same. Advocate William and Michelle Gilman, owners, George P. Squire is the agent. Mr. Eglin?
Good evening, Chairman.
We're ready for your very short presentation.
Board of Supervisors, this is a request for another 195-foot-tall tower with a four-foot lightning rod for a total height of 199 feet on parcel 28-97F in the A2 zoning district, which would be in accordance with Section 86-154 permitted uses with a conditional use permit and allow for a tower greater than 100 feet in height in accordance with Section 86-665. So the subject property is located at the intersection of Route 522, Zachary Taylor Highway and Chopin Road, Route 623. The property is 722.32 acres with a lease area projected to only take up 5,625 square feet. On the Route 522 side of the parcel indicated with the red star on the current slide, the parcel is located in the mineral election district. The 2040 future land use map designates the parcel as rural, however, it is just outside the Lake Anna Growth Area, which can be seen on the current slide. Staff believes proposed tower would accommodate economic growth in the Lake Anna Growth Area as well as, it is close to the mineral and Louisa Growth Areas, accommodating, accommodating economic growth and designated growth areas is touched on by the 2040 Comprehensive Plan in Section 3.1.2 is shown on the current slide. The county's wireless telecommunication consultant, Al Terris, provided an analysis of the application, which can be found in packet pages 650 to 656. The county adopted a public facilities plan in 2024. Staff has provided an analysis of the proposed project, which can be found on pages 585 through 586. And a neighborhood meeting was held in Louisa County Public Meeting Room, which no citizens attended. On July 10th, the Planning Commission found the request to be in substantial accord with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan and voted to recommend approval of the conditional use permit from a six-to-zero vote with 21 conditions, which can be found in your packet on 588 through 589. This concludes staff's report.
Any questions for Mr. Eglin? All right. I have one question for the applicant.
You cannot have free Verizon service.
I don't have any question for the applicant. What, this is the area that I represent. So just out of curiosity, about what is the radius of the service from that tower? I know that topography comes into play and tree cover and all of that, but I mean, just a general.
We, we generally say that for a tower of this height, again, 199, two to five miles, two to three miles. It, it also depends not only on topography and obstructions, but it depends on how many people are using the tower.
Oh, you actually said it.
And that, that's the problem that we're having right here.
You actually said it.
We have, Verizon is on every tower within four miles, and the problem is, it's also on the emergency fire rescue department. It's got new antennas directed toward mineral, those are at capacity. It's just a growing area, and so more capacity is needed as well as coverage.
And this will help with that capacity, correct?
Yes.
The reason I asked the question is I drive, when I come here, I, I don't go that way exactly, but I go down Gold Mine Road and then Bibb Store Road. And probably in the last four or five months, there's just really popped up some dead spots. And part of that, I think, is because summer's here, there's a lot of people at the lake, the capacity is going up and that sort of thing. And I, I'm very supportive of this, I'll have to have somebody else make the motion to approve it, but I just wanted to ask that question. If you want, you can give a presentation, but I just told you I was very supportive of it, so that's totally up to you.
I see some heads shaking. I'll, I'll forego the presentation if any questions come up or, or citizens have issues they would like me to address, I'll be happy to come up and answer those.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak about this CUP? And I'll close the public hearing.
No move, second.
You moved in a second to approve the CUP. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next is a ordinance amending Louisa County Chapter 14, Animals, Section 14-1, and removal Section 14-29. Ms. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, this is amending Section 4.1 of the Animal Control Ordinance, and basically what we're allowing here is the private citizen to actually enforce dogs running at large, and they would be able to go directly to the magistrate and apply for issuance of a summons or warrant if necessary. And secondly, we're also deleting the dogs running at large section that's relating to the subdivisions, and so that's no longer necessary. So that's it, but it should help enforcement.
And just for clarification, I've brought this up before, and let me bring up a question, Mr. Barnes usually, this has no impact on hunting dogs, let's get that.
I meant to say that, no impact on honey dogs.
But for clarification, the reason this further tweak to our dogs running at large or vicious dog ordinance is that the magistrate, the chief magistrate in the magisterial district that we're in, though we did copy our ordinance from Spotsylvania, which is enforced in Spotsylvania, but they're in a different magisterial district, our chief magistrate was not willing to enforce that code, so this, we have worked, you and I have had meetings with the Sheriff's Department, you've had meetings with the chief magistrate, and this seems to now satisfy their concerns, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions of Ms. Smith? All right, thank you, ma'am.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm looking at Section 14-29, and it's noted here that we're eliminating, I guess, penalty for violation in a number of subdivisions? I'm just trying to figure that out.
Because we're applying it evenly across the county now.
Understood, got it. Is that accurate? It is, I understand it.
Any other questions? We got the hunting dog thing out, Mr. Barnes, while you were gone. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone here that would wish to address the board concerning this ordinance?
Farm dogs.
Oh, they seem to have a public hearing. No, it is a public hearing.
Open the public hearing.
So, all right, I'll open, open the public hearing. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
So moved.
Properly moved in second that we adopt this amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution to amend Chapter 72, Section 72-1, 72-2, 72-21, 72-22, 72-23, and 72-24 of the county code. Ms. Smith?
This is the CPAS ordinance that was enacted, I believe, in 2021, and it allows loans through private lenders for certain eligible improve, eligible improvements, and basically it's energy efficiency-type things, water efficiency and safe drinking water improvements and that sort of thing. So basically what they're doing here is just amending a few of the definitions, not a whole lot of changes, amending a few definitions that I have listed there, and that's about it. It was just some state, changes made through the state legislature that they wanted us to make changes as well.
Any questions for Ms. Smith? These, again, are just technical changes, being as school by answering, right? All right, is there, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would wish to address the board on this public hearing? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
First, so move, second.
Been properly moved in second that we approve these amendments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Has there been properly moved in second that we adjourn? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pending adjourn.